thirteen approved amendment of resolution R one two two three one eight reason additional amount of thirty thousand dollars with land associates engineering planning architectural survey for the architectural services fourteen approve award contract with seventy two up LLC doing business as national auto fleet several eight of Watson two new or unused Ford Bronco sports. Number fifteen is approved amendment of resolution R zero eight two four six nine to extend the contract for one additional year with wireless electronics incorporated doing business as wireless communication and electronics for radio maintenance for the fire department. Number sixteen is approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by CoLab Arts. The reason is installation of the new wall bureau at one forty-two French Street on the Sedam Street side seventeen is approved amendment of resolution R zero eight two five six three an additional certification of funds for public property in the amount of seven thousand dollars with swamp fuel eighteen is approved temporary left turn prohibition from Joyce Kilmer Avenue southbound to Hand Street eastbound and nineteen is a resolution to support the aspire program application by the M S B Eastern Hamilton LLC for Easton Somerset Transition Redevelopment Plan we then have items for discussion by council we have public comment we then have dates to remember the city council agenda review October fifteenth filed immediately by the city council meeting. We have a full call please.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson is excused. Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Here.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig is absent. Council Vice President Castaneda?
Here.
Council President Anderson?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been tied with satisfied and the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filled with filed with the city clerk has been placed on appropriate board in city hall and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick namely the home news trivia stand for the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a moment of silence we begin remembering our men and women in our military all over the world especially in those places that are undergoing a lot of trouble. Thank you.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Madam City Clerk, as the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Council President, if your response is seen that city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Okay, we have no public hearings, we have a New Brunswick City Market twenty twenty five budget. Madam Clerk.
Council President, this is the time fixed for a public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five City Market Budget. The City Market Budget Resolution was approved by the governing body on September third, two thousand twenty-five and was advertised as required by law on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, together with the notice of this hearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available for the public during the past weeks.
If anyone has not secured a copy of the City Market Budget, they do so now. At this time, I'll ask clerk to read resolution R one zero two five zero zero A by title only.
Council President, I have a resolution regarding the reading of the City Market Budget by title only. R dash one zero two five zero zero A by the Municipal Council whereas NJSA forty colon fifty-six dash eighty-four provides that the two thousand twenty-five New Brunswick City Market Inc. Budget as advertised shall be read in full at the public hearing or that it may be read by its title only if at least one week prior to the date of the hearing a complete copy of the approved budget as advertised A shall be posted in a public place where public notices are customarily posted in the principal building, public building, and B copies made available to each person requesting the same during study and during the public hearing. Now therefore being resolved by the New Brunswick City Council that it is hereby declared that the conditions of NJSA forty colon fifty-six dash eighty-four, one A and one B have been met and therefore the New Brunswick City Market Inc. Budget for two thousand twenty-five shall be read by the title only. Being further resolved that the certified copies of this resolution shall be sent by the city clerk to the following city community center and New Brunswick City Market.
After the board my resolution will be adopted.
Sure.
Resolution is adopted, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We now have a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five City Market Budget. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard may do so. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up for this section. Please give your name and address for the record. If you have any questions or anything like that, please come to the microphone over there. Again, this will be confined solely to the City Market Budget.
Yes, good evening, council. I'm Charlie Cradaville, resident of Sedam Street and the editor of New Brunswick Today. I guess I'll start by saying I like a lot of the things that New Brunswick City Market does. I recently got to attend one of their meetings and I was really pleased with just about everything I heard there. That said, I have to oppose a portion of this budget, the security services. So I see here security services will slightly increase to fifty-one thousand six hundred. And I guess that's a combination of paying the police for certain things and also paying TSRG, Total Security Resources Group, the company that we spoke about at your last meeting. Can you tell me the breakdown of how much of the security services is for TSRG? Stefani?
I don't have that with me. I can provide that.
Care to say it's a majority of the fifty-one thousand?
Care to say.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I might, I feel like I've identified some problems with this company. At the last meeting, I asked who's in charge, who's the person we should talk to at the company, and I still don't really know who that is. I know they're patrolling the downtown area, George Street. Last time we spoke about this, it was in relation to the library, which is a separate contract through the library, but yeah, these are folks who, you know, many of them may be nice people and well behaved and, you know, add value and do nice things when they're out in downtown, but on September ninth, I had an interaction with one of these people who was harassing someone. I started recording and the individual yelled at me, said, "Stop recording, stop recording", and would not identify himself when I asked for his name. And I don't think we should be funding secret employees, people who don't tell us who they are through this company, to patrol downtown and act like they're law enforcement. You know, listen, it's one thing to say, "Hey, can you do me a favor? Stay over there and, you know, I don't want to be on camera." Like, that's one way to handle it. Another way to handle it is to yell at the person who you don't know who they are, a stranger, and tell them to stop recording. That is acting under the color of law. That's acting as if you can give orders to people. And these folks are nameless. I still don't know the dude's name. I saw him out working last time. I raised this issue to TSRG, to the company. I offered to share my video with them. They promised to follow up with me. They never did. This was September ninth. I attended the City Market, the City Center Board. I raised it to the City Center Board. I haven't gotten any follow-up since then, and I raised it to you all at the last meeting. And so seeing that nothing has come of that and that nobody followed up with me, nobody asked to see the video, and this person is still on patrol, paid with taxpayer dollars, I'm concerned that there's an accountability problem, that if people don't have to give their names, but they can go around in uniform bossing other people around and get away with it, even when somebody does get it on video and does complain that there are no consequences, no changes, I see that as a recipe for problems. And so you have to ask yourself as the council, do you want to continue to fund this company to have these people patrol our city? And are you going to wait for something really bad to happen before you revisit it? Or are you going to take this as an opportunity to say, "No, we're going to put the brakes on this. We need an account, we need it to be accountable." And so I can't in good conscience support TSRG continuing this work when they have a policy of not identifying themselves and not keeping their own promises about investigating their own people and following up. I mean, maybe, maybe I'll hear from them tomorrow, but September ninth was a while ago and something should have been done by now, but nothing's been done apparently. And I'm just asking you to please hold off on this budget because we shouldn't be funding secret agents to go around and boss people around in uniforms that say City Center on them. The city center should be an inviting place, a welcoming place, and this may be an aberration. This may just be one person, but if there's no accountability mechanism, it's going to become a problem mark.
Thank you.
Will you do that? Will you hold off on it?
Mr. Stefani, have you had any problems that you know of?
The only situation that hasn't risen was when Charlie indicated he'd come to the board meeting. We did have a conversation with TSRG. The officer that you directly had a conflict with that you were filming was removed and taken to and fixed on another duty, who also now have ID cards that they will show if somebody asks them. So that has all happened within the past two weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the City Market Budget? Seeing none? Councilmember?
I'll say.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. We have ordinance for discussion on second reading. Number one is bond ordinance providing supplemental appropriation of five million dollars for water treatment plan improvement project in and by the city of New Brunswick and authorizing the issuance of five million dollar bond or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. Mr. Wallace, will you give us a rundown?
These monies are earmarked to backfill monies that were taken from other projects to fully fund the water treatment plan upgrade. We were short a little bit in terms of the monies that were appropriated at the time. So this kind of backfills that, monies that were borrowed from other projects, and then also fully funds the water treatment plan upgrade and any anticipated additional costs that might arise.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on this order? We are preparing again to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only. We're up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by way of the microphone. Please give your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Justin Malone. I'm from New Brunswick. I just had a quick question for the council. It's will the bond ordinance increase water rates in two thousand twenty-six?
Mr. Wallace? Yes. Yes. Anyone else on the second reading for number one? Seeing none?
Who's ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
My name is Harley Reed saying I'm from Malone. And I just have a question. What is the timeline for these improvements and how are you going to be able to determine which projects just need to be prioritized?
Sure. Mr. Wallace? How do you really catch whatever question?
I'm sorry, is that my phone? But it's hard to hear.
Yeah, just speak up a little, that's all.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was just wondering what the timeframe for these projects is going to be and how do you know what to prioritize?
Okay, timeframe and how do I know?
Some of the priorities are articulated by regulations, both current regulations and some that are in the pipeline proposed. There's an ongoing twenty-two, twenty-three million dollar project that's phase one of the upgrades, which is setting us up for the phase two part of the upgrades, which is five million dollar fully scheduled out. Timeline for that is about three years. And that's going to be followed by a phase three, which will be geared towards meeting PFOS, Forever Chemicals, removed. And that's going to be a regulation that will have to meet come two thousand thirty. So that'll be forty-two, forty-five million dollar project. When that gets off and around, we'll start the engineering design on that probably by the end of this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carla. I actually just had a question in Austin, Arizona. I'm from New Brunswick. My question was, what percentage is being increased and how this will like impact everybody in businesses and residents here in New Brunswick?
Wallace, can you hear that? Yeah, yeah. This is just the bond.
Oh, the bond. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay, so my question is, how will this borrowing affect the city's budget and taxes?
I can answer that one if you'd like, sure.
Thank you.
So this provides authorization for the water utility to move forward, or CFO to move forward with moving the projects where as money gets borrowed, it has certain payments put into the budget. So you'll see it come through in, in a future bonding or future note sales and within the budget, but it's all included in our rate. And our rate, our rate is designed to capture these costs so that we actually can figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Motion.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Before I go, I just wanted to add more context to the first question, which is why I was like, yes, it's really raised. I think it's important to keep in mind that as science and research going on grows, we have more understanding about the safety of our water system and as much the D P and E P A have increased, and, you know, part of the rate and the increase is to make sure that we're modernizing our water delivery system, right? And so it's all about the safety of the residents, so.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have number two, the ordinance for amendment supplementary revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title twelve, Streets, Sidewalks in Public Places, Chapter twelve oh eight, Street and Sidewalk Excavations in regards to the updated permit fees. Mr. Lenti, can you explain?
Certainly. We're examining this specific, this ordinance, just the fees for dumpsters alone only. We have not looked at this fee since two thousand and seven or eight, I believe. The current charging is if the dumpster is in public right of way, it's fifty dollars for thirty days. It's on private property, it's twenty-five dollars. We're raising it to a hundred for either situation, and we are still markedly below our neighboring municipalities what they charge for dumpsters.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Ken, we're preparing to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only. Again, for this ordinance, you have up to five minutes, one time up for this one. Any members of the public wish to speak on the ordinance, please approach the council through the microphone. Your name and address.
Who's the ordinance?
Say.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Number three is an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title thirteen, Public Services, Chapter thirteen oh four, Water Service System, Section thirteen oh four oh one zero, and Chapter thirteen oh eight, Sewer Service System, Section thirteen oh eight, three forty, Schedule A, a schedule of charges, water rates, and sewer rates. Mr. Jules, can you give us an idea?
My pleasure, Vice President, and to council. This ordinance presented on second reading for the council tonight will increase water and sewer utility rates to meet the rising cost of the utility debt service related to major improvements as well as capital reserves. This rates will keep pace with the incrementally increasing operational costs for utilities and probably, most importantly, provide the city the financial ability to continuously plan to produce the cleanest drinking water and modern utility infrastructure that meets or exceeds the NJDP and US EPA standards as such as residents expect and deserve. The city conducted an internal rate study that shows the impact of the four-year, four year over year increases beginning in two thousand twenty-six for each utility and corresponds to projected expenses by category. The draft study also includes information comparing New Brunswick's projected rates to surrounding communities, showing that New Brunswick residents will still pay less for their water than others while having the newest treatment and distribution technology improvements in place. Our water utility director talked a little bit about the ongoing improvements to water treatment plant. It's a wholesale reconstruction of our plant, and we will have the latest and greatest technology of water treatment as we complete phase two, which will be completed by twenty twenty-six. The increase related to debt service is the largest single increase cost on the water utility. The projects that this service, that this debt service supports includes the funding of the water treatment plant improvements, our expansive lead service line replacement program, miles of main replacements, and ongoing dam improvements. Folks don't know that the city has three large dams that it's responsible for maintenance. Each of these projects were clearly planned for by demonstration, authorized by the city council, and the debt service expected to come online as these projects come to fruition. It is important to note, though, that this represents approximately a hundred and fifty-four million dollars in projects, but only ninety-five or ninety-six million of that is included in this rate increase. And the result of, this is a result of approximately fifty-eight million dollars in grants from New Jersey State Infrastructure Bank, Principal Interest Dividend Programs. So essentially, the city is going to receive a hundred and fifty-four million dollars worth of improvements for under a hundred million dollars. So I think this is a sensible approach to making sure that the utility can continue to operate and provide the services that it needs.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments? Ken, we're preparing to open up the public hearing for this ordinance only. Again, up to five minutes for this one, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on the ordinance, please approach the council by way of the microphone and speak loud.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, Sedam Street, New Brunswick Today. I guess maybe somebody could help me understand the logic behind having these surcharges. You know, I see the minimum quarterly charge and then folks who use below a certain amount get two percent surcharge and others get a three point nine five percent. Is that, yeah, incentive people to use less water? Is that the goal?
I think the number is either above or below it, right?
Okay. So it appears either up.
Vice President, that was, that is part of the ordinance that's not changing, and it is, it is somewhat of an incentive, but that's not what's being considered.
Right, I understand, but so it's what I think it is.
Yeah, I think it's from two thousand nineteen.
Got it, okay. And, yeah, just I did some quick math. It looks like maybe a nineteen percent increase over the four years, twenty-six to twenty-nine. Is that accurate?
That's what your man comes up with, Mr. Cradaville. That's your man.
Okay. You might just give me the current minimum quarterly charge, twenty twenty-five?
I have that as a small right, right? You have that number.
You have that ID.
Current quarterly minimum charge is a hundred and sixty dollars and sixty nine cents.
That's for combined water, yes, hundred sixty dot sixty. Okay. I'll do the math. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Oh, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Emily Loa. I'm actually from Alton, Massachusetts, from here for school. And it's like a relatively simple question, but how much will this rate be raised this year?
This year or next year?
Of this next, whatever.
Twenty twenty-six, I guess.
I'm going to ask this from our ideas. You can try to write it.
Remind me, uh, race, how much are they going up?
Yes.
About two percent is coming here coming up.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Motion?
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, the capital ordinance provided for the various water capital improvements and acquisitions in and by the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating fourteen million seven hundred thousand, therefore to pay for the cost thereof.
I move the ordinance, sending down October fifteenth, twenty five, about thirty minutes and fifty seconds.
Say.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have number two, is a capital ordinance providing for the various sanitary sewer capital improvements and acquisitions in and by the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating thirteen million three hundred thousand, therefore to pay for the cost thereof.
I move the ordinance, sending down October fifteenth, twenty five, about thirty minutes and fifty seconds.
Say.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. And number three is an ordinance to amend and supplement revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title twelve, Streets, Sidewalks in Public Places, Chapter twelve oh eight, Street and Sidewalk Excavations Regarding Standardization of Permit Extension.
I move the ordinance, sending down October fifteenth, twenty five, about thirty minutes and fifty seconds.
Say.
Councilmember Estebor?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We now have resolutions one through nineteen. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on the resolution before I ask the question?
Mr. President, it sounds specific about resolutions, but I want to acknowledge all the representatives here who are here to ask questions. I want you to feel welcome, all of us have to feel welcome. Don't be nervous. This is part of your induction to civic engagement, and what is so happy we're here and taking hearts now.
Anybody that come to class, if you need a few moments, feel free to talk to me. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to the public on this resolutions only. You have, again, up to five minutes for this resolution. Any members of the public wish to speak to resolutions? Again, you have up to five minutes, one time up for the resolutions. You can give your name and address, just for the record, and if you can tell us which resolution you're talking about, that will help us.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville. I think there's a lot of folks here who want to ask you why there's not a resolution about the Immigrant Trust Act tonight, so I'm going to try to be quick with my remarks here. Five oh seven, Brightview Engineering. This is supplemental engineering services, not to exceed fifty-five thousand, but then the resolution has an amount of seventy thousand. Can you explain that discrepancy, fifty-five, seventy?
Mr. Lenti?
I haven't seen the resolution itself, but I believe the initial award to Brightview originally was seven thousand. We're adding another fifty-five thousand for the total of one twenty thousand.
Correct.
Thanks for clarifying that. Can you tell me, is this related to the Sedam Street and Lee Avenue work that this company was hired to do?
A very small portion of A very small portion of that is related to it. This is mostly Brightview assisting us with the stormwater regulations that the state is imposing that are changing every single year. In fact, before the end of the year, we'll see another flood control ordinance come before this council, which is required by the DEP. So the line share of the funding is for their assistance with us with stormwater regulations.
Thanks. And then I want to ask about the final two resolutions. So 518 is a term proposition at Joyce Kilmer in Handy. Maybe Mr. Valenti can speak again and explain what's prompting this and does it have anything to do with the fire headquarters having to build a temporary structure in the middle of the intersection?
Sure it does.
Now, President, the prohibition is 100% related to the temporary fire structure. We want the queue to clear on Handy Street at a light, when a, at a light signal cycle. People making a left from Joyce Kilmer onto Handy would delay that queue, clearing the queue of traffic. So we're just allowing straight only at that point.
Thank you. And then the final one is a resolution where this was added at the last minute for you to give your blessing to a development project that I think many of us are hearing about for the first time. This would be, according to the resolution, a 335-unit apartment building with 8,000 square feet of retail and 335-space parking garage. This would be, I believe, at Hamilton and Hardenburg. Can you tell me a little bit about this and why you've added this to your agenda to endorse it?
I got the president. I believe that somebody from the developer should be here.
Yes, Mr. Martin, sure, from the developer representative. I advise that this is a resolution to support the application for aspiring tax credits. It's similar to what we've done in the past with other projects. The details of the project, I understand, this group will stand up and give the answer to specific questions.
What is the specific question?
Why should the city council endorse your, your project?
So the planning board already made a recommendation to the city council to create an area in need of redevelopment, which the city council has already approved. And these are the eight parcels within that area, that specific area in need of redevelopment. So we're merely asking for the council to issue a resolution of support to the EDA so that we can pursue the tax credits that would help finance the project.
Okay, and why would the project be good for New Brunswick? What, what's in it for New Brunswick?
Additional housing to go with the Helix projects and everything else that's going to be done to create more jobs, so more housing. 67 of the 335 units will be affordable, and they will follow the guidelines of the city and the county for the division between very low, low, and moderate income.
And it sounds like a lot of the details have been figured out. Can you tell me how many stories the building would be?
16, but it's not a story-driven issue. It's 180-foot cap on height.
Got it. And any timeline on what it might appear before the planning board for a site plan review? Or maybe the housing authority, if you're going as a redevelopment project, am I hit?
Middle of next year. Housing authority application is in for designation of redevelopment status, which allows us to then pursue our site plan application.
Okay, and just last question, if you could just tell me a little bit about the company, MSB Easton Hamilton LLC, and who's involved in that? How'd they come to decide they want to do this?
It's a, it's a, an assemblage of different developers. Me and my partner, Ivan Baron, came out of Rosine Property Company back in the day. And we've created a company that's now partnered with the company that had the parcels under contract, and we've merged our expertise and our experience to present the project to the city and hopefully get it approved.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions? Seema?
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have some, an extra discussion by council. First off, let me congratulate Councilwoman Gaskin on being honored by the Scouts of America. Congratulations. Any other member of the council?
I just want to say, Mr. Cradaville, we're going to check the microphone.
It's better on you.
My little public comment is just a reminder to, you know, spread the word, the Anchor Tax Application, Properties Tax Agreement, application through, like, the end of the month. Renters qualify, homeowners qualify, seniors qualify, nonseniors qualify. Literally, a lot of people qualify, so this money, from $450 to $6,000. So just please spread the word, apply. It's called the Anchor Program, it's completely readily acceptable, so please apply.
And if you apply next year, you know, have you gotten a last year?
It doesn't have a comment form of this information. So if you received a benefit confirmation letter in the mail, you do not have to apply. The state has applied for you. If you have not received the letter in the mail, you need to apply. And there's a lot of misinformation, so please, if you did not receive that letter, you have to apply.
And that's one of them, that's the Anchor. Or you might have gotten the PSA1, combines three, especially for seniors. So you might want to look into that, because you do have until the end of the month to file that. And we're now going to open up the floor to the public, for public comments. Again, you have up to three minutes. Give your name and address for the council, for the, again.
Eric Spear, Jamesburg. Last meeting, I think it's the council, if they were looking into increasing the police department's involvement with the Arrive Together program and the council vice presidents that will speak with the police about it before that, this meeting.
What I stated was that I looked into it, but I think that there's, well, I'm still, it's still pending, and the Arrive program, my understanding is not completely funded, but you're looking into that, but the program has been, right?
Right. Captain, who do you have?
Council President, I don't have the exact timeline for you, but we have been participating with the Arrive program for some time.
Okay, so maybe this question is directed to you. How much funding do you get either from the office of the attorney general directly or through the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office indirectly for demo blog or that grant?
That's your question, I'm absolutely not prepared answer. I don't know, I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next.
Well, everyone, it's about this. My name is Amanda Domengas. I was here two weeks ago. I sent everybody an email two weeks ago about the Immigrant Trust Act resolution and hopefully gave that pass here in New Brunswick. I was at the last city council meeting, and I also sent you all an email last week. Unfortunately, I haven't heard back from anybody. I left my personal email address and phone number. I'm going to ask Amanda Diaz to pass it to all of you lovely folks, as well as to the mayor, but I have not heard your thoughts on the Immigrant Trust Act resolution here in New Brunswick. I have not heard from the mayor either. This is an urgent issue for us as New Brunswick residents, right? I went to the Edison City Council meeting, and I spoke there, and they voted immediately and passed it, immediately. I was shocked, right? Here in New Brunswick, I expected for us to be able basically to do the same. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself, and I came up properly. I'm Amanda Domengas. I live in Buckers Village. I'm a PhD student here at Buckers University, and I'm a community organizer with New Label. I have three children in New Brunswick public schools. I was born and raised here, born at St. Peter's Hospital. I'm a lifelong resident, and I don't plan on going anywhere. I love our community, and I want to continue to have it protected. We have about a 65% Hispano Blante population here in New Brunswick. People are nervous. I don't know if you know, but this morning, at 7:00 in the morning, we had someone picked up, picked up by ICE, abducted off of Hamilton Street. And if you didn't know, last week, we have a man, a father of three, who is also a soccer coach here in New Brunswick, taken by ICE as well. The community is scared, and it would be really great if we had our city officials be able to stand up and say, hey, we stand in solidarity with you. We know you are afraid, but we back you, we're with you. We understand the contributions that you bring to this wonderful city, and we want to be there to support you. I think it's a no-brainer, and I know some folks have said, well, if we pass such a resolution, is that putting a target on our backs? They're already here. They're already picking folks up today at 7:00 in the morning. We're already a target, we're a blue state, we're a blue city. We're already a target, right? But now it's about standing with folks. And the Immigrant Trust Act resolution here in New Brunswick, if passed, would be able to give us more support to get this passed statewide. We have already areas like Edison, Bouddhama, and other townships. The more townships we get to pass that, the more power we have to get this passed at the state level. We need to get this passed at the state level. We do not know what this government raise is going to bring, we do not know what the next three years are going to bring. And, you know, city residents deserve to feel safe in their own cities and feel like the mayor and the council members and everybody is on their side, no matter if they're Hispano Blantes from the immigrant community, people of color, or Quinceaños, right, or whoever. They should be able to feel safe and protected. And right now, I think everyone's just kind of looking to you guys about, like, what's, what's going on? That was the conversation started after we left, or was it forgotten about? Because we didn't forget. We didn't forget, because every day they're here taking new people. The children are scared. My son is asking different people that he runs into if they have papers or not, because he's afraid that they're going to be taken away. My son is six, but he understands the reality. He's seen it, he's seen it on the news. He's heard about it from his friends, right? He's very nervous, and people are not going to events here in New Brunswick. I went to Mercado Esperanza, the last one we had. It was a very low attendance. I go every year, multiple times a year, because Mercado Esperanza has a lot of events, and I love those events. There was not many folks. There were no lines, there were no people to get through, because people are afraid to leave their homes. People are afraid to go to the hospitals, they're afraid to go to the clinics, they're afraid to go to different classes that the community offers, and we have so many great community programs, and people are absolutely terrified. I think this would be a wonderful step forward for the city of New Brunswick to show their solidarity with folks and to say that we stand with you, especialmente during Hispanic Heritage Month here. Especially during, however, still in between, right, Hispanic Heritage Month here. This would be a wonderful thing for us to do. And so I want to know where we're at on this right now, if it was discussed, it's not on the agenda?
It has been discussed. There are many, including myself, that are behind this act. However, I have a problem with taking care of the Assembly and the Senate and telling them what to do. So, but I know, I and I know other council members, and I know the city of New Brunswick is doing a lot of the things that's in that act already. We're trying to, we don't, we don't take care of ICE. You know, they do their own thing, unfortunately, but I do know that some of our council members, they want to talk about it.
No, I was just saying that even the, the council as a whole, if I not put forth this resolution, I, I do, I wanted to be on record that I do support. And I think it's important for our community, like you said, even if it's symbolic, you know, just as a community showing some attitude, you should be supportive to it. So I just wanted to just say that.
And I'll second what the council would have said, I feel the same way. And I will go on record as fully supporting this resolution, and at least understanding that I work with the immigrant community here in New Brunswick, and I am the son of immigrants. And so I completely understand the importance of the immigrant population feeling as safe as possible, understanding that we don't have any power over the federal government. But I do understand in, in that sense of unity, the importance of something like this. So on record, I would also support the resolution.
So I apologize, I thought I sent you an email, maybe I have the wrong email. I had Amanda@newmigrant.org.
Yeah, I was in the box there.
I could focus your attention. So I actually have a different perspective. I am required to say what I'm about to say. So I know what I'm about to say is super frustrating. I appreciate your advocacy. I have to stay on a resolution, this resolution in particular, because I have a conflict of interest. I work for the interesting senator who wrote the first iteration of this bill, Paul DeBoggs Act. DeBoggs Act was turned into the Immigrant Trust Act, he is the sponsor of the bill. The legislative code ethics requires that I maintain and avoid any actions that create conflict of interest between my senate work and my responsibility of the council. And clearly, in this terms, that means that as a councilperson, I cannot vote for a resolution that is going to go before the senate, because I sit in the room and talk about it. So I can talk about it in my senate capacity, I can't talk about it on councilman, meaning I can't talk about it outside. But if you want an opportunity to talk separate from this room, and I can put my chair to that, I'm happy to talk to you in that regard.
We appreciate that.
I wanted to say I'm supportive, but also, we know there's a growing immigrant population in New Brunswick, as well as where I work at, we have a growing immigrant population, and we've had to have training, because we have a lot of our kids, a lot of our students and stuff, they're a little scared, some of them stay home from school. So we've had to have that training, you know, had to talk to them, you know, what's going on with your families and things like that, and that's supportive.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Troy Shitea McNappiano. I'm not a New Brunswick resident, I was born here, though, technically. I come from South River, which is, you know, a hop and a skip away. And I just wanted a second notion for the support of a passing of a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, right? I'm not obviously here to spread fear, but I did read an alarming headline last week, which of course may not be entirely true, but, I mean, it's not been confirmed yet, about 1,200 detainees just completely missing from a detention center in Florida, right? And of course, the question that immediately comes up is, why would you bring up something happening in Florida when we're here in the middle of New Jersey? But the fact of the matter is, is that people that are being taken by ICE are being relocated all across the country without any accountability, any records, or any communication to the family members. I mean, I've heard accounts of people who's had their family members with critical conditions or needing medical attention, completely and silently relocated to a different part of the country, no communication, right, with the families, no information. They're completely operating in the dark here about one of their loved ones, right? And I would just like to just reiterate and repeat that this resolution is, is critical. This is a critical time, this is an unprecedented scary time. I'm not going to miss my words here. And it's really, the, this Trust Act is really just about building up trust, right? It's not a particularly radical or controversial piece of legislation. It's not completely forbidding the federal agents from being able to enter our state or what have you. What it does is, it gives us the, it lets the state leverage its own powers against ICE and be able to say, no, you can't just simply have information on somebody because they're trying to access critical services that they need to live a normal life, right? It's, it's not a very particularly drastic piece of law, right? So I feel like, once again, it's a no-brainer to pass a resolution in favor of this Trust Act, and it's, it matters more than just simply getting it passed already, it also shows the people of New Brunswick that you guys are willing to stand with them and be able to support a piece of legislation that the federal government may disagree and criticize, right? And I mean, it's, it's in the name, it's the Trust Act, right? And I would love for the people of New Brunswick to have trust in their, in their representatives to basically say, you're allowed to access these services without fear of being taken away by some federal agent who disappeared into some facility. And that would be a great, thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elena Martinez. Yo vivo aquí en New Brunswick desde 1986. Y yo no estaba viviendo lo que ahora estamos viviendo.
Hello, my name is Alvinna. I'm a resident of New Brunswick since 1986, 1986, since 1986, and I've lived here a long time, and I have not lived in the way I'm living right now, is big change. Lo que ahora estamos viviendo, lo que los emigrantes estamos viviendo ahora es algo cruel. What immigrants are living through right now is something that is very cruel. La comunidad está con miedo. Yo he visto niños llorando, y lo que ya les puede, por miedo. The community is in fear. I've seen children crying because they don't want to go to school because of the fear they are feeling.
Tienen miedo de al regreso no encontrar a sus padres.
They're afraid that they're going to come home to have no parents.
He oído de niños que sus notas estaban aquí, ahora están aquí, porque el miedo los aterroriza.
I've heard about children who've had their grades up here that are now down here, because the fear is terrorizing them. because the fear is terrorizing them.
Realmente necesitamos una resolución para esto que la comunidad está viviendo.
Really, we need a resolution to address what the community is honestly living through.
Porque el que seamos emigrantes no quiere decir que no somos humanos.
And to say that we are immigrants does not mean that we are not human beings.
Yo quiero que por favor se pongan la mano en el corazón y den una resolución a todo lo que nosotros estamos viviendo.
I really would love for you to put a hand onto your heart and give a resolution for what we are going through.
Porque todos tenemos hijos, tenemos nietos de padres emigrantes que quiero que eso entiendan, que eso necesitamos que resuelva, que den una resolución a esto porque realmente lo que estamos viviendo es algo inhumano.
We have children, we have grandparents, we have immigrant parents. And what we are going through, we honestly need a resolution for what we are all suffering through.
Yo les pido por favor que nos ayuden a resolver esto para que nuestros niños ya no estén viviendo esta angustia, este temor de que cuando regresan a casa ya no estén sus padres en casa.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you to help us pass this resolution so that our children will not continue to live in this fear thinking that their parents will not be in their home when they come back from school.
Hay personas que están con cáncer, hay personas que están sufriendo dolor y no tienen, tienen miedo de ir a los hospitales por temor a que inmigración se los lleve.
There are people here who have cancer, who are sick, who are afraid to go to hospitals because they're afraid that immigration could take them away.
O ya no los están queriendo atender, ya se regresan con dolor. Hay muchas personas que ya no quieren ir a hacer compras por miedo, ya no quieren ir a las Londis, a la Bar, por miedo. Es lo que se está viviendo ahora, es algo aterrorizante. Necesitamos resolución para este problema que está viviendo la comunidad de New Brunswick.
People do not want to go to stores, people do not want to go to the laundromats. They are living in such fear. It is terrorizing. We are living in a moment of terror. We need to try to resolve this terror with a resolution passed here in New Brunswick.
Por favor, necesitamos ayuda, necesitamos que nos ayuden a dar una resolución a este problema. Se los vamos a agradecer y muchas gracias.
We need a resolution for this. We ask you for your help in this. We would be very thankful for your support. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tony Faber. I live in Scotch Plains. I am a Rutgers graduate, class of ninety-two. I'm also here to talk about the Immigrant Trust Act. Our country and our communities stand on the brink of danger. We actually do know what will happen in the fall if Jack Siderelli is elected. He has said he will have ICE working hand in hand with local law enforcement. That means the police of New Brunswick detaining people for ICE if he has his way in November. Given the disaster that would be for this community and other communities across New Brunswick, in terms of what kind of trust could any of the community have in the police? Who would come to the police to have a crime solved if the police could disappear one out of the city? Besides the disaster that that would be for all of our different communities, it's important to look at what we can actually do. And this is one very simple, yes, symbolic resolution. I know towns across New Jersey have been passing these, and I've been in a lot of towns and town council meetings, and towns pass resolutions in support of legislation all the time. So something's not adding up. The council seems very sympathetic to the plight of people here, but in a moment of greatest need, passing a simple resolution seems very difficult for you. I invite you to do whatever it takes to look beyond whatever principles you have about how resolutions work or what it would take, and do what you can to stand with our community and help build the momentum to have this pushed through the Assembly and the Senate. Thank you very much.
My name is Ellen Witt. I'm with Dyer, deportation and immigration responsive people. I was here last time to support the Immigrant Trust Act and the resolution from you all, as well as your public support of the resolution to push it through. I just want to point out, I mean, we serve people from all over New Jersey, but we especially serve a lot of people right here in New Brunswick. Many immigrants call us because we're serving people who have family members who are detained, who have legal issues with immigration, who are left with no means to pay their rent or support themselves because someone has been detained who's a breadwinner. So, let's face it. This legislation this round has been in the committee since September 2024. It's been in there for a year. In fact, it was the earlier version as well. And it has not moved. And it's not because there's not a lot of support in the legislature or because there's not support among communities. We have to face that Democratic Party leadership in Trenton, namely Coughlin and Skatari, have refused to let the committees hear the legislation and discuss it. And even if they want, make some amendments if they have some issue with some piece of it. But they don't even allow it to be discussed. And I realize that you may feel that you have to defer to that leadership or that you're scared about your future political life if you don't, if you take a public stand on something that they haven't been prepared to let committees discuss. But we really need this discussed. And it takes leaders from communities to actually remind them that the communities are desperate for this to get moving. And right now, it's not on a course to get passed, even in a lame duck session, unless something starts to move. And I don't think, actually, I don't think the resolution is really symbolic. It's making a public statement from this city. And that puts pressure on the Democratic Party leadership. I can't imagine, I mean, what it is you think would put pressure on them to make them move, to make them do something. I mean, it's embarrassing. You've got a New Jersey where so many immigrants live and so many have been picked up. And all of us know that we're no longer living in a world of business as usual. We're living in Trump's world. And Trump's world is one that plans massive, massive deportations. And in order to actually carry that out, it requires, it's not optional, it requires massive collaboration with the police, the jails, the agencies, with ICE to do that. It requires it. And so we actually need to protect and take steps to prevent that kind of collaboration from being able to happen in the future. We can't just put our heads in the sand and say, oh, I'm scared of Trump, so let's not take a public position on this because he's going to come get us no matter what we do. So we might as well just suck it up now and take a really strong position. I just, I'm very, very concerned that, that things, I don't know, whoever gets elected, I'm not sure there's any guarantees right now, unless people really make their voices heard, that they don't want this kind of collaboration, that we want an immigrant trust act. I'm not sure what will happen. And it's really astonishing that this community, which has one of the highest percentages of immigrants, including a very high percentage of undocumented immigrants, has not publicly taken a position on this. So I urge you to please reconsider, not simply say, we can't do it because of Coughlin, we can't do it because it's only, you know, it doesn't, it's not important because it's only some kind of symbolic measure. But instead, say, hey, you know, I want to represent my community who's asking for this. All right, thank you very much.
I can assure you that there's nobody on this council that is scared of anybody. We do, thank you, because we do what's right. Again, our police don't involve ICE at all. If they're going to take a resolution, I'd ask some of my councilpeople to see Mr. Shammy about that, putting a resolution, resolution on there, whatever. But again, we believe in what you're saying, we understand it, we back you. Our police back you. Everybody backs you. It's a matter of whether or not the resolution would do any good. But if you really think it's going to be that way, I ask some of my councilpeople to see Mr. Shammy for a resolution.
Councilperson, on that note, Mr. Shammy. I think, you know, I really think this is important for our community, and I say it in front of her. And I know it might be of respect to them, but with my respect to the council president and the resident council, I would like to propose a motion to have this resolution.
Whatever the council's pleasure is, the council's pleasure. I will tell you right now, I'm not prepared to read a resolution. I don't have a resolution prepared. I wasn't instructed to adjourn to or prepare.
Can I ask the councilman to then amend to say?
I meant to say, if we're supposed to have a resolution ready for the next?
And I'll second it.
So what you're proposing is a motion by the council to have a resolution agendized for your next meeting. Okay, that's fine. The motion was carried, and I would be so instructed. And there will be a motion, there will be a resolution on your next meeting agenda. And then that motion at that time will be subject to the vote of the council.
Thank you.
You need to take the formal motion, council president.
Okay.
Motion by councilwoman Escobar, second to right.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
I've stated four, and fortunately I have to abstain because my boss is the sponsor. It would be duly noted that the call for me to use my city council position to influence any of my work in the state.
Duly noted. Council vice president Castaneda.
Yes.
Council president Anderson.
Yes, and I want to assure you again, until such times that takes effect, somewhere down the line or something, and hopefully it doesn't, that our police do not work with ICE. We do not share data, anything like that, or anything like that. So please get the word out there that we are not with them. Whether this resolution goes or not, we don't do that kind of stuff. Not for our people here in New Brunswick or anywhere. So hopefully, the voters will also vote correctly and we'll get that done. All right? Next person.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Carlos, and so happy to hear where you guys are going. And I see some of you in the community coming to our restaurants, taking pictures. You know, I know some of you are really community advocates. And that's the same reason why I get so frustrated hearing a lot of you saying, these four people supporting this, and I think there are seven council members, so that's already more than half, right? So in a pragmatic way, this should have been passed a long time ago. I don't know what the dragon is. And if you're really an advocate for the community, especially if you're an immigrant or son of immigrants, this should have been passed months ago, right? So if you feel that you want to use your privilege, that you don't want to make the Senate or the state uncomfortable if you're going to tell them what to do, you know, I tell you not, don't use that privilege. Because while you use that privilege for not wanting to affect the state affairs, our communities are being separated, parents, children, right? They're being kidnapped and snatched off the streets, right? So I ask you, some of you, not all of you, to get off your ivory towers and really, really think about this. Community members are asking you to represent them, right? They may not vote on city council vote or get you on your position, right? But they're making New Brunswick richer every day with the labor. So at least recognize their dignity. Don't just take advantage of the labor, right? So I'm so happy to hear that you're going to put this in the agenda for next time and because at least four people have said they support this, three other people to see where they spend, right? This should be passed. It shouldn't be a big deal. You have all these witnesses, you know, tonight, you know, saying that you guys are going to pass this. Can we work on this?
That's what we're just saying.
And Mr. Anderson, it's not too big of a problem. Just pass, right? Just pass. Look, you're the president, right? You have a leadership. You have three other people supporting this. It shouldn't be, you know, too much of a difficulty. And with that, I've got two more minutes. I don't know what else to say. Now, I mean, truthfully and honestly, listen, this is going to take a village, more than city council, school boards, community members, community organizations. Another advice that I gave you is sit with community organizations that are on the ground every day. Some of us are in the Lainey Hall, in immigration detention center in Newark, every weekend. Talking, helping, families are going to see their loved ones being detained for months, right? I think some of you will change your mind if you go there once in a while in Newark, the Lainey Hall. And you come back here and pass this. And many other things, initiatives that will help or protect immigrant communities here in New Brunswick. Go ahead, you want to say something?
I was going to say that I know that people here, we get a lot of people outside of here who sometimes are afraid to come to these meetings and give a opposite point of view. We have people who want resolutions for a lot of things. So we have to take that into consideration also. But again, we back that, we understand it all. We are doing everything that we can to not share data, to not share the police with ICE, all that kind of stuff. So please get the word out there. And what can I say?
Can you also like commit to sit with the different organizations in the community that are doing the work on the ground? So ask them, ask them what's needed, you know? Have you asked?
Right, we have.
Some of us have.
Some of us have.
Okay, not just one org, but there's plenty of orgs on the ground, they're working.
I can tell you personally, I've sat with many orgs. I've been doing immigration work since a long time.
And I know that, right? But for example, you have New Labor here that's been advocating forever. Have you guys sat with them lately? Not three years ago, not five years ago, but in the past month or two, when a lot of this kidnapping that are happening, you know, have occurred. Have you sat down with New Labor? No. So my advice is go and do so. And then you can hear directly from the people on the ground doing the work, what is needed, right? We know we cannot change the federal law, but on the ground, at the local level, we can do our best together. Thank you very much.
Again, I just want to reiterate, in my state capacity, I've worked with many organizations, including the labor, about this issue and have done so over years, even recently. And in my state capacity, I'm committed to meeting with any organization. As I said, my boss has written a portion of the legislation, so I'm very well prepared to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of short, so I'll find a way to talk through this. You know, the poem that says, first, they came for the, they name a ruler. And the point of the poem is, at the end, they come for you. So don't think that this is about people who speak another language, who are immigrants, who are all immigrants. But if you saw them coming through the door for you, would you be jumping up and realizing that, oh my, it's actually here? And it is. And I want to let you know it's entirely appropriate and essential that we defend our Fourth Amendment, starting from right here at the municipal level. Because this is how we got a Fourth Amendment. There was a time before when in this country, we actually had an authoritarian ruler, King George, who in Hamilton says, you'll be crawling back to me. What are we doing now? Do we even have the guts of a people who started this country? Do we have the fight that they had? Do we have the fight that they had? In the municipal level, people got sick and tired of British soldiers coming to their homes and taking any man, woman, child, animal, crops, tools, anything they had. And they went to the municipal level and they passed resolutions, ordinances, laws. And that finally made it to the state level because the municipal level influences the state level. Even Skutari and Cofflin. And you can go have a talk with them personally yourself and probably should. And because people stood up, we had a Fourth Amendment started at our state level. From municipal to state, finally, when we had a national constitution, which perhaps some of you have taken some kind of promise to support. I know I have. Yeah, we ought to fight for this thing. And you should. Starts here, goes to the state, and finally made it as a Fourth Amendment. We need to stand up today and have even a little bit of the guts that they had then. And I call on you to pass a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act and then some. Go after it. Make sure that it's heard. Make sure that Cofflin and Skutari do put it up for a vote. Thank you very much.
All right, good evening, the Brunswick City Council and to everybody else who's here today. My name is Joshua Riddick. And first off, I just want to give a shout out to everybody who was here advocating for your Immigrant Trust Fund, or Immigrant Trust Act, excuse me. I think that should definitely be passed. I think it's great that you all are advancing that. That's not what I'm here to talk about, but I think our elders coming to speak on our behalf is a great segue for this. I'm here to speak about Deborah Terrell, because I had not heard her name today. You came to speak about the Arrive Together program and kind of threw my bone. I'm just gonna ask you to say her name and talk about it. I'm here to advocate for justice to be served in the murder of Deborah Terrell. Excuse me, my voice gets shaky. I'm here to encourage the council as concerned New Jersey resident. I'm not a New Brunswick resident, I'm a New Jersey resident. And I currently attend William Patterson University in Wayne. I'm encouraging you all to be more vocal and explicit in your support in seeking out justice for Ms. Terrell, even though I'm currently aware that it now lies in the hands of the office of the attorney general. Again, I'm not a New Brunswick resident, I'm not associated with the family, I don't intend to speak on their behalf. I'm here as a concerned citizen who has been following this case and loves and cares deeply for black people. As Mr. Charlie Cradville, apologies if I mispronounced that, I've never met you before, and Mr. Terrell Pippen, who is done wasting his time with you all, at least here in person, have both mentioned during the past couple city council meetings, it's crucial that the public stay invested in the case of Deborah Terrell and seek justice for her murder at the hands of five Brunswick police officers, including Josue Plaza, the shooter, Rodney Chang, who's still, at least from your report at the last council meeting, still working, he's out in the streets interacting with residents, Daniel Williams and Sergeant Eric Brown. I'm not aware of the fifth person, but as all things do in the era of mass information, I'm sure that it will come to light. At the last council meeting, Mr. Pippen asked you all a very simple but important question. Have you actually watched the video? Have you actually watched the body cam or civilian footage widely available on the internet? He was asking rhetorically Vice President Councilman Castaneda. He said he did share, he declined to share any opinion. I want you to know that I did watch it. I don't know if any of you all have seen the video, to whatever level of censoring there is, of a sixty-year-old, sixty-eight-year-old black elder, a woman who could be my grandmother, a senior, and a lifelong resident of this very town, being gunned down and dragged down the hall like a ragdoll. In the same vein, I have watched the public meetings of Tyler Nichols, of George Floyd, of Terrence Crutcher, of Carl Dorsey, a New Jersey resident and New York native, and Dante Wright, and Sonia Massey, and Robert Brooks, just to name a few. But as a young black man, I became acquainted with the topic of police and the potential of police violence very early on. You grow up in the era of body cam footage and unheard audio footage of many black people's very last breath. Perhaps you have seen these repeated abuses on film too. Maybe it has done something to your psyche, your humanity. It has certainly done something to mine, which is why I'm here, my voice shaking, and the many other black people in this country. It is a destruction of our psyche. We begin to adopt the assumption of criminality and danger that is projected onto us by people like you all, changing how we see our own beautiful people. In America's internal colonies, this reality is quite contrary to the recent outcries. Political violence itself is clearly okay in this country. The state shows us this time and time again. In fact, political violence is normalized, internalized into the fabric of the black American psyche. Everywhere we look, we see black death. They loop body cam footage for us on YouTube Shorts, crystallizing the realization that black life in this country is expendable in the eyes of the state. It is the very fact that these individuals are murdered by an entity of the state, law enforcement, which is allegedly here and set to protect and serve us, that inherently makes their death political. State sanctioned violence is the epitome of political violence because it is in the tragedy of state sanctioned murder that the due process, which is endowed by rights of all American citizens and which has been so preciously protected for the officers who murdered Deborah Terrell, is stripped away from the individual who was killed on behalf of the state by the very individuals who the people have entrusted with power to serve their collective interest, not your own. As a result of this stripping of rights, due process, I know I'm about to run out of time, so you don't know who me, but, and thereby hurt humanity in this country, a team of officers quickly became Ms. Terrell's judge, jury, and executioner, denying her the necessary mental health support that she needed and instead prescribed to her an eternal statue in the black American death bury. And the most disgraceful part is, you all here in city council are quite complicit in the crime. You too are aiding and abetting crime and violence.
Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, it's my last question. Anyone else?
Hi there. I'm only class from Fourth and Sixth Avenue Street in Brunswick. I want to echo the sentiments that all of the other speakers tonight have already expressed in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. It's, you know, I think a pretty common sense piece of legislation and certainly if the majority of the council members here who are in a position to vote on it have expressed that they personally support it. I can't see any reason why this has not passed already. And Council President Anderson has said that you're not in a position to tell the legislature what to do. Passing a resolution isn't telling them what to do, it's telling them your position, telling them how you feel. That's it. And that is something that you are more than in a position to do. It is really your responsibility to do that. I also want to follow up on the many previous comments that I've made about the four places for the death of Deborah Terrell. And that conversation, I understand, takes time, but it needs to be had. And my concern, my ongoing concern that I've already expressed is that this is a conversation that, to the extent that it's happening, is happening behind closed doors without broad public engagement in the discussions and the decision-making process. So my questions that I would genuinely like an answer to, you know, whether they are the final answer or an answer in progress. What is the council going to do differently so that this does not happen again? And how and when will the public be able to engage in a dialogue with you on those decisions?
Well, I think some of the dialogue certainly comes from the public comments that people are giving through here. Town hall meetings would be great, but it takes people to do that. It also takes respect. And that hasn't been able to happen yet. There are talks between a lot of people. And what we can do better, different, same, justice. As we mentioned before, we can't talk about it. One, because it's an attorney general, a grand jury, and two, we have been cited with a lawsuit. So we can't talk about that.
Council president, finally, you did ask, and I committed to ask a question to the police director and the mayor. The same answer that we've been getting, but just so you know that he was asked many times about participating in the town hall and the answer continues to be no.
So the police chief and the mayor have both directly said, no, they will not engage in a public town hall?
Not even, not in that type of engagement. They have been engaging in the conversations, but not in that format.
What format are they willing to engage in to rouse the public?
I didn't ask. I just asked about a very big town.
And Council President Anderson, to your point about not being able to discuss it. In this current moment, I'm not asking you to discuss the specific details of Deborah Terrell's death. I'm asking, what is the council going to do to change circumstances in the future? And you can talk about the future.
But you can talk about it, but again, it all comes back to this shooting. And people will understand that. And therefore, we don't want to say anything at this point in time.
So when are you gonna say anything?
When it's over and done.
Then what incentive will there be for you to prioritize this if it's over and done with? What do you for the next one?
We're already discussing.
How can the public engage in that dialogue? Because just speaking at public comments, where everyone has their prescribed five minutes and once that's done, they can never say anything again. Where sometimes you'll engage in a back and forth, but other times if you don't, if you're not comfortable with the question, you'll say, this isn't a back and forth, this is public comments, not a public question. Right, that's a response that we hear, we often hear. That's not a dialogue. So where can the public have a dialogue with our elected representatives about a problem in our community that we need to solve moving forward?
Well, again, there are a lot of our committees that you can go to and discuss things with them. And they always get back to us.
Can you share what committees those are that we're going to go to and what they mean?
I think it's on the website, the community. Mr. Jones is committee, different committees, things like that.
If I may, yes, I'm sorry. A lot was just like here, so let me get that right off. Deborah Terrell's life absolutely mattered. And I think that this was such a a significant moment in our city's timeline and history, right? That there's a lot that happened, which is gonna be investigated and examined. I know, I have taken a lot of meetings, I know some of my other council meeting members have as well, about a variety of aspects, right? It's not just law enforcement, we think, it's about mental health, right? Were there any other services, like she was a member of her city, right, a person, right? You know, the availability of mental health services, right? Whether at the city level, the state level, the federal level, right? There's a whole variety of conversations that are happening at once. And I, you know, I've said before, I hear the frustration of the young gentleman from Patterson, you know, how big of a deal it is that he came from Patterson to advocate for the life of a woman, right? That does not go unrecognized. I can assure you that conversations are ongoing about what more can the city have done to be supportive of a resident and their kind of need, absolutely. What I hear now is an ongoing, you know, town hall. I need to come back on that, because I didn't know about that about the future yet. But obviously, we all take meetings, right, availability, I know I can take them. And if there's one that we want to talk about, how do we take it?
And I know that we have express counsel, man Castaneda and myself, we are open to do it, you know, leaving community members. We have been open about that. But some of, you know, some people were asking for the mayor and the police, they wanted the mayor of the police department. So that's, you know, that's great too.
Oh, we would like you there as well.
But we are, I think that we have expressed a willingness, we never said no to having a because of the sunshine, you know, you can have all of us together. It would have to be something like that, it would have to be like three or four, three, five, four, or three, actually, two of us. So that's a quick, that presents also a challenge, right? We don't want to go, we don't want to break the sunshine, huh? So, but I'm not speaking for him, but I know that we have said it before, Councilwoman Castaneda and myself, so.
You can speak, I'm right there. Again, just to reiterate, I'm always open to dialogue. Mr. Cradville, I'm actually waiting for your email that you promised or your email.
I made it, Mr. Cradville. With Councilman Fleming and I made with Mr. Cradville two persons concerns that he has, right? So I think that sometimes, what I always say, what I mean, in that situation, right? One-on-one as a resident, you know, we met as a constituent and we met, we expressed our concerns, we just listened, right? Just to listen and see and look at it, right? That doesn't mean that you're gonna act on it, maybe in some of it, we have not acted orders, maybe we agree in some, we agree, we don't have pre-orders, right? But we have, I think that we have been open to that conversation. So if that's still the case, that's still the case.
I appreciate that, and those private meetings are incredibly valuable and I don't want to shortchange that. I do think that the framing of, we just listened, we may or may not take action, is exactly the problem here. And I do think that we need a public dialogue, it's not, those one-on-one meetings themselves alone are not going to engage everyone who needs to and wants to be part of this conversation.
Again, we are not denying, I guess, Councilman Castaneda and myself, we have said, and I think, yeah, Councilwoman, you asked me too, I've expressed that we don't mind dealing with people. We've understood that it's a conversation, right? Just listen, listen, because sometimes, you know, and I'm not talking in general, we're sometimes, yeah, we are there, right? To listen. And we might have an answer, we might be able to, not have an answer, we might be able to act, we might be able to act in some of this stuff. That's what I'm understanding, I'm not saying, because again, I don't want to put false expectations out there. But the listening part, we are more than willing to listen to our community, especially to our residents, right? Because that's what we're here for, at the end of the day. So that has always, we have never denied that part. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradville, Brunswick, in Brunswick today. I think there's a lot that I unpacked there, but I'm gonna start with what I think is the most critical. Deborah Terrell was killed by the New Brunswick police on August 8th. AG is still keeping it secret, the names of the officers. Four officers were present at the time. Sergeant Garrett, excuse me, did he say why? Why did he mention why? I believe there was a reference to, a vague reference to threats. Okay, okay. The AG is still keeping it secret, four officers were there at the time. Sergeant Eric Brown, Officer Rodney Chang, Officer Daniel Williams. Those three are back on course. I can confirm that, having seen them in uniform, working. Can you at least assure us that the shooter, the killer officer, Josue Plaza, is not back on active duty? We can't discuss. Well, that's a shame. I think the public deserves better than that. Why can't you just tell us if he's active or not? Why is it a secret?
Mr. Cradville, you've been told time and time again that we, our hands are tied on this. We cannot talk about something that's an active investigation. We've heard from the city attorney.
I'll give it to him again.
So I think it's unfair, knowing that we can't talk about it because of our position that you keep pushing. I understood, one second, let me now speak. My time is right, you can stop this time. But my thing is, time and time again, we've told you that our hands are tied. You know your hands are tied. You are very knowledgeable about what cities do. And so what else do you want us to say? When we can't say anything else.
Respectfully, I disagree with the city attorney's position. And if you can't be the one to say it, then the police department should say it. It should not be a secret which offices are active and which offices are inactive. That's, we shouldn't have secret police in this country, that's my opinion. This country was founded, and I'm not saying it is. You're supposed to be innocent until proven guilty. And that's what the grand jury is all about. proven guilty, and that's what the grand jury is all about, so.
I didn't ask anything about that, I asked if the man is active duty, working for us, working for the city, in a police uniform with a gun and a badge, and you won't answer.
And I've stated to you before that we cannot answer, on top of the fact that that's a personnel issue, which you well know that we do not touch upon in all this conference. So there's two reasons why we can't answer.
I'm sure you could come up with lots of reasons why you shouldn't answer, but I'm saying, in a country that I want to...
Let's not change the, the, the ad, we can't answer. Not that we shouldn't, we can't.
Well, I respectfully disagree.
Okay, go ahead.
And we've heard your, we've heard your dissent.
And, look, I'm going, because this is going nowhere fast. The reason I know is because I spent more than four hours at New Brunswick Municipal Court fighting not one but two erroneous parking tickets that I got, and the, that's where I saw the three officers in uniform. So I want you to know that in January, the NDPA passed a resolution designating nine people as parking enforcement officers. It says that the resolution would be forwarded to the clerk for adoption by the council. That didn't happen, did it?
I am aware that you brought some of this information to Councilwoman Escobar. I'm in the process of looking into it, and I will have an answer for you pending that anyway.
Okay. So you don't even know if you adopted the resolution?
I know that there's something in place, and I've asked people to look at it, and I will give you an answer.
Okay. Well, it doesn't matter, because the NDPA hired a bunch more people and didn't even pass a resolution to do it. They have not gotten the required eligibility certifications for any of their parking enforcement officers. Have you looked into that?
Again, it's in the process of being looked into.
Okay. Have they completed the training courses that they're required to complete?
Same answer.
Okay. I'm just going to bring it all together here, because the secret agent's working for the city center. I'm glad to hear they told you that they removed the person who's responsible for that incident? Unless it's been in the last 24 hours, that's not true, because he was working in uniform last night. I'd like to hear what training those folks are providing. I'd like to know what training New Brunswick Parking Authority is providing, and I'd like to know what training New Brunswick Police are providing. So can you look into those three things for me?
I will definitely look into the parking, as a leader.
Thank you. Council President, will you look into the police training and the training that the TSRG privately...
Police train either in Seagull or some other place, or if they're coming from another police department or whatever, they have that, and they have their own individual lectures and things like that.
Okay, I'd like a little more details on the training they've had, maybe you can help me. At the end of the day, the Immigrant Trust Act should be passed into law. Fascism is real, it's coming to cities across our country. There's no guarantee that the next member will uphold the existing immigrant trust directive. You can either get out in front of it or wait until it's too late. I want to commend Councilwoman Escobar for being brave, doing the right thing, making that motion today. We need to see more of that here, and I want to see this resolution passed immediately.
Anyone else in the public?
Council President, I'm proud of you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
As it relates to police license, saying, may the captain and fellow sit on the state mandate that all police officers have to go through to be a police officer in New Jersey?
Some of the requirements for police?
Well, as you know, you have to attend the police academy, which is an extensive program, and we use Cape May, it was his residential. If you're looking for an itemized list of what training we are required and what additional training that we provide by our own volition, I'd be happy to give that to you.
Is there a licensing requirement for police to...
Yes, sir, for all the employees of the police officers in the state, under the Licensing Act of 2024, I believe, you have to comply with training requirements, you have to have a clean driver's license, no convictions for domestic violence, anything like that, and we have to background check you, and do an ongoing background check while you're employed here, and submit to the state that you have none of these issues.
Are the New Brunswick Police Department subject to that law?
Yes, a third one department every year. We're actually doing it right now for the next third.
I think that actually explains training required for police department.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick today. I'm going to be free, I'm going to say in Spanish. Muchas gracias, por poner esta emoción. La mitad de nuestra comunidad, si no la mayoría, somos indocumentados inmigrantes en este país. Creo que sirvimos mucho. Hacemos muchos de esos trabajos sin beneficios, sin ningún salario mínimo, y creo que lo hacemos por nuestras familias y venimos a este país para algo mejor. Y creo que en casi los diez años que llevo aquí, creo que es la primera vez que veo que usted hace algo por la comunidad en poner esta emoción, así que gracias por eso.
No, hemos pasado también muchos años atrás, hemos pasado también que la comunidad inmigrante pueda tener licencia de conducir, eso es una primera vez. He just said that this is the first time I'm doing something, doing that I'm doing something for the community, even the city council, but it's not. In the past, this council has a total resolution supporting the Dreamers. In the past, this council had a past resolution supporting for our undocumented brothers and sisters to be able to have a license in the state. In the past, this council has supported, overall, with some of our undocumented and immigrant communities suffering, well, suffering, yeah, from, you know, through those bosses and companies that were not paying them what they deserve, and they owe the money, we passed in order to help with that and to protect anti-wedge theft. So this council has been proactively in addressing some challenges that the community has been, and the community has been very vital to bring forth those challenges, and we have been more than active to ensure, and I can tell you a lot more, you know, municipal ID, you know, city leave, you know, I can give you a lot of things that this council has been able to do for the last, I've been here for almost 13 years, 14 years, so there has been, this is not the first time.
Yeah, but I refer to your initiative, you know? It's not always that the council moves things fast, but you know, I'm pretty amazed by your position, you know, in just the fact that you're not in the chair and put that into motion. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Can I finish what I was saying?
No, so unfortunately.
Oh, it's not, you can't, no, no.
No, just this one, no. All right, see you.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Gassanella?
Yes.
Council Governor Anna?
Yes. You're the director. You're the next one.